Okay, let's all rise please for the pleasure of the legions. Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Before the start of regular meeting, we interviewed some candidates for various boards and commissions, and we also had an executive session about a personnel matter. Before we get started, do any of the supervisors wish to make a, move any of the interviewees we interviewed tonight for any of the positions?
Yes, I would, I would like to nominate Bob Schaefer to the Park and Rec Building.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of Bob Schaefer? Aye.
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 Is that five and O? All right, anything else, Ryan?
Yes, I'd also like to nominate Doug Rowe, Christopher Bignall, and Carol Sugars to the Local Traffic Advisory Committee.
Any other nominations? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. And last, Nancy?
Sure. I'd like to nominate Chris Ballerini to the TAB Committee to join us. All right, Chris Ballerini, Telecommunication Advisory Board, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have a presentation on the Parks and Recreation Open Space Comprehensive Plan. Judy, are you going to take that one?
Yes, thank you, Barb.
Judy Stern-Goldstein was the consultant on this plan, yes? Is that what you call yourself on this? Consultant?
That's, I think that works, yes. We have a team working on the project. Patrick Graham is also on the Zoom call with us tonight. He's the Certified Park and Recreation Professional as part of the team. Karen Sweeney worked hard on the project with us as your Park and Rec Director. And we also worked with the committee, the Park Recreation and Open Space Comprehensive Plan Committee, which, as you know, the board appointed to work on this project, consisting of representatives from your various boards and commissions. We had lively discussion throughout the project, especially when reviewing the draft. The, the plan itself, pardon me, is an update to your 2007 Joint Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan that was done in conjunction with Doylestown Borough. The update looks like this. You've all seen it, it was in your packet. It's intended to be a guide for the next five to 10 years. It's intended also to be a living document. It will be responsive to the changing needs and emerging opportunities that may arise over the course of the next five to 10 years. It will be a guide to the future parks, recreation, open space development, and operations and maintenance for your Parks and Recreation Department and staff.
Can you keep your voice up just a bit, Judy? Can you keep your voice up?
Yes, sorry. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, now I'm getting an echo. Are you getting echo, or is it just me?
Just you.
And I seem to be in two boxes.
Judy seems to be in two boxes, Ed. Nope, you're not in two boxes, Judy.
Okay, just online then, sorry. I'll continue. Many of the projects and improvements that were suggested and recommended in the 2007 Joint Park Recreation and Open Space Plan have been implemented, and your staff has been successful in obtaining grants for many of those projects for implementation. The hope is that this new update will also serve in that capacity and take you through. The new report updated the township profile to include the current demographic information and projections. We actually updated the demographics twice as new information became available during the course of the project. The plan, as it is now, also has a new and, I guess, stronger emphasis on sustainability, inclusion, social equity, and flexibility. With this plan, we believe that your Parks and Recreation Department will have the tools to pivot and adapt with respect to both programs and facilities as challenges and opportunities arise. We've all seen the way the department was able to pivot and take advantage of new opportunities during the current COVID-19 crisis, but we're trying to make sure that we're not reacting to just one crisis, but we're looking at new opportunities and constraints that may arise in the future. The new plan also updated all of your mapping and park diagrams to reflect the current conditions, full update to all the sections to bring everything up to current standards. Patrick went through the programming and budget analysis. All the facilities have been reviewed. And in conjunction with the Park and Rec Director and the committee, we developed four goals. I'm just going to read those four goals to you. They're important, and they're the global things. Goal one, continue to sustain and enhance the quality system of parks, recreation facilities, railways, and trails balanced for recreation and resource conservation. Goal two, manage the parks and recreation system in a professional manner that conveys the greatest possible benefit to the public. Goal three, provide unique and enriching recreation opportunities to residents of all ages and abilities with an emphasis on inclusion and social equity. And goal four, invest in parks and recreation to sustain and enhance the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Each of the recommendations in this plan fits under one of those goals. In order to show and demonstrate the implementation, potential implementation, there is an action plan. It appears on pages 108 into 114 of the plan. Here's a chart, look like this. They're handy, you can hold that section out, use it for grant writing, use it as checklist, use it for budgeting. It's an implementable action plan. You can use it as a checklist, as I said, and you can look at that for future improvements, staffing, maintenance, budgeting. Everything's lumped under goals, so each of the goals has a series of objectives under it. Each objective has a series of action items. Each action item has a priority, low, medium, high, based on timeframe. Low is within the first year, medium is in the second to fifth year, and, and the, I'm sorry, immediate's within the first year. Medium is to term, and low term then would be five to 10 years. And each action item also includes a responsible entity, which would be something like the Board of Supervisors, Park and Rec Director, Public Works, Township Staff, et cetera. So, of who would be responsible for the implementation, all the policies are set by the board, and then implementation comes with the responsible entity. This plan was prepared over a series of years. Just going to take you through a brief timeframe of the project. The grant was submitted to, grant application was submitted to PA DCNR in April 2017. The township was fortunate enough to have the grant awarded in December of 2017. In May of 2018, the proposal was executed with the state. In June of 2018, we had the first kickoff meeting, series of meetings, Sports Focus Group meeting, Park and Rec Board meeting. There was the draft ready in May of 2019, and then in the summer of 2019, Karen rightfully said that, wait, we need to get more public information. We need more public input. There's some big issues. So during that time, there was a hold put on the study. There was a public visioning meeting held for the Community Recreation Center at the Township Building, in the brand-new Township Building at that time. And after that, we continued on with the project. The draft of the full complete plan was submitted to the committee this August. Study committee then met in September, twice in September, and then final revisions were done, and there was a virtual meeting on November 5th wherein the committee recommended adoption of the Park Recreation Open Space Plan update. In December, I guess December 1st of 2020, PA DCNR approved the plan, and final edits then were done on December 3rd, sent to the township. That's the report that's now in your packet, and I believe there's a draft resolution in your packet too, if you're so inclined to adopt the plan tonight and then let it start being implemented. I believe also there were going to be some members of the study committee to support this. I don't know if anyone else is here, or do you have any questions of me, or the committee, or Patrick?
All right, I was just handed the draft resolution. Can, I haven't, I haven't seen this until, I was just handed this. Judy, I read this whole thing. I read every page up through Appendix A, and I, and it's really good. It's very comprehensive. It's very, includes everything that we need to have, I think that we need to have in a plan such as this. And I, I just, I don't know if we can pass it tonight, because has anyone looked at the resolution?
I, I also read the whole thing, and I also felt the same way. I thought it was incredibly comprehensive and gave some wonderful direction, and also some really great background in terms of demographics and needs and trends and...
Yeah, are you, have you seen the resolution?
I haven't seen the resolution.
Okay, so...
Yeah, we, we learned about the resolution this afternoon. Judy was asking if we had it, and...
We'll have to consider it for our next meeting.
Yeah, we can do the resolution at the next meeting.
And meanwhile, I have several, like, just misspelled edits that, you know, not, not going to affect the substance of, of the, of the document, but I was reading it anyway, so I made a note of, and read of the, of the edits, so, very simple. But I do have one, I think substantive question. At, at some point, you, you talk about the, how much net parkland there should be per 1,000 residents, and the old standard was, I think you said, 10 acres per 1,000 residents. And then, the new standard is 15 acres per resident. Is that about right? I mean, 18 acres, 15 acres per 1,000 residents. Is that the standard that you would like to apply now?
It's, it's one of the standards. It's the one that we're using in the report to quantify things. The current national standards say that you should develop one for each community, and that's the one that we've developed for this community in this region.
So you recommend that it be 15 acres per 1,000, correct?
Correct.
But at some point, in 2020, your report says that we actually provide 17, over 17 acres per 1,000 residents. So, we're not going to go down, are we? We've already achieved the max.
No, 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 no.
You're the head of the curve.
We've already achieved the max, right?
You're the head of the curve. You don't go backwards, but as the population increases, you want to make sure you're, you're handling it. And the report basically says that Doylestown is in a good position right now. In no way are we recommending to relinquish any of that acreage of park and recreation land.
All I'm saying is that we exceed the standard right now.
Right.
Is that right?
Yeah, it says, that's sort of a township thing. You like to be overachievers.
I would really like to highlight that we exceed the standard, instead of like, no, we should only be 15% or 15 acres. Okay, never mind. That's the only substantive question I had. But we're going to ask the, ask for the next meeting to pass on the resolution, okay?
Sounds good. On behalf of my team, thank you for, for letting us do the work. It's been a good project.
Okay, thank you. Good job. Good job, Karen and team. Other supervisors, you okay with just putting this off until the next meeting, since we're just getting the resolution?
I was able to review the resolution, but if not everybody had a chance to, then, then I'm okay with passing to next time.
Yeah, same.
Okay. I'm not quite sure what I heard, but it sounds like you're okay with passing on it for tonight. Okay. Ryan? Okay, thanks, Ryan. All right, let's move on to the next presentation. Ed Denton?
Can you hear me?
For the Pension Advisory Committee. Hi, Ed.
Can you hear me?
Not yet.
Quiet, too. All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Happy New Year. It's good that you was all you today.
You're muffled, Ed. Ed, you're muffled.
I'm sorry. The pension, I mean, let me take my speaker out. How's this? Is that better?
Hard to understand.
It's hard to understand.
All right, I'll, I'll try to talk slow. The Pension Advisory Committee has two quick updates for the Board of Supervisors. Next slide. All right, the, I'll be covering the investment, the new investment monitoring reports and the proposed revisions to the pension plans' investment policy statement. Okay, yes, all right, we're good, good. Over the next 18 months, the PAC has been, over the past 18 months, the PAC has been working with the Investment Advisor, Deborah Brady, and the Pension Advisor, Pension Advisor, Jim Kennedy, to improve the reports that the township perceives to make more, make them more informative and easier to understand. We'll be sharing these new reports with the Board of Supervisors in March. Next slide. The graph to the left is a representation of the annual returns for the township's pension portfolios over the past 10 years. As you can see, the annual, the annual returns fluctuate quite a bit each year, which is not surprising. However, the, the PAC has observed that when Deborah Brady presents to the Board of Supervisors, she focuses only on the current year and the prior, and/or the prior year results, which we thought was a problem. The table on the top right of the slide shows the average annual returns for the township's portfolio for the past three, five, and 10 years. The PAC has been trying to get these figures for several years and finally received them this past November. It's a good thing we got them, because Brady's company is about to merge with another one, and so they'll be using new computer systems, so this historic performance data would have been lost if, if we hadn't gotten them in November. As you can see, the pension plans' wait, time-waited returns for the past 10 years were 6.58%, which is below what the, the assumed discount rate of 8%. As we mentioned last September, portfolio returns over the next 10 years are expected to be around 6%, which is why the PAC is recommended to the Board of Supervisors that we lower the discount rate. So it is, so having this type of data going forward is, is going to be part of the standard packages, so we were happy that we got those returns. Next, next slide. This past fall, the PAC worked on revising the township's investment policy statement, which was last updated in 2011. I'd like to point out that the lion's share of the work that was done, was done by the committee's newest member, Tom Burke, who, as you may remember, oversaw the employee pension plans at the United Nations in New York City. Tom did a spectacular job working on this project. And next slide. This slide explains the purpose of the IPS and is self-explanatory, so I'm going to skip over it. Next slide. This slide highlights the proposed changes to the investment policy statements. In a nutshell, the key changes include making the township the author of the document versus the investment advisor, who their previously drafted it, outlining the PAC's role concerning pension plan oversight, the addition of a benchmark to help the township monitor performance, reference to the township's target discount rate migration path, and finally additions to the list of prohibited investments, namely, no individual securities, and no non-public, unregistered, or illiquid investments. Next slide. So in terms of next steps, we, as we understand from Stephanie, the next step would be for the township supervisor to review our proposed draft and make recommendations that's appropriate. Then the Board of Supervisors would vote on the revised IPS, and then the IPS would be sent to Deborah Brady. In terms of 2021 objectives, we're in the process of finalizing those, and we'll have those to you towards the end of the month. And finally, we'll be, next month, we'll be working with Brady and, and Kennedy to prepare the fiscal 2020 pension performance review, and that will happen on, in March. Any questions?
Yeah, for tonight, we, we, I've reviewed your policy statement that you presented in our packet, but for now, you just want us to consider it and then pass on it perhaps at our next meeting. Is that what you're thinking, Ed?
No, exactly. My understanding, the, the solicitor asked me to take a look at it too, so that's what we're seeing.
They asked me to look at it.
Okay, we'll ask, we'll ask Jeffrey to look at it. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Ed, and your committee, Mr. Burke especially. Thank you for this, this presentation and all this hard work. You've really advanced us.
Thank you.
You've really advanced our position and helped us with this a great deal, so thank you. Does anybody have anything to add? Supervisors, any questions from out there? Anything else, Ed? Is he gone? I guess he's gone.
Everybody left, it looks like.
Oops. Okay, well, that's pretty much the end of the presentations. Anyway...
But you need your other supervisors.
Yeah. Nope. Coming.
Maybe they're back.
Am I lost?
Yep. No, you're not. You're just behind a screen, Jen.
Your voice is there, but your mugshot isn't.
We'll get you back.
Okay, good. Well, I'll just talk if, if you can hear me.
Oh, yeah, there you are.
I just wanted to thank the Pension Advisory Committee for all their work. I mean, this, this stuff is not easy to understand, and they made it incredibly easy for me to, to put my hands around, and, and made it very clear the direction that we need to go in the future. So I just wanted to express my thanks to them.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? We're all good?
I would just probably add on to that. I also appreciate the amount of education that they're, not only their knowledge base, but their edu, their focus to educate the Board of Supervisors. I know that's a continual goal, and I think it's great and helps us as well as the, the community. Thank you.
Okay, any other business at this point from any visitors or public comment? Hearing none, we're moving on to announcements. Okay, on January 19th, wait, we open to the public on January 19th. That was, that's already happening, yeah. So, but you still have to wear your mask, and social distancing is required. The next meeting of this Board of Supervisors is February 16th at 7:00 PM. If you want to log on remotely, just contact the administrative offices for a link. We're going to be closed Monday, February 15th for President's Day, and the Christmas tree drop-off is now until January 31st at this New Britain entrance to Central Park. And now, minutes approval for the reorganization meeting of January 4th, 2021. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? Yes? Any changes, corrections? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Actually, I think that there were some, there were some corrections. I'm trying to pull it up right now.
Okay.
I believe at the very beginning, they referred to Supervisor Mannion as Mr. Mannion. I believe that's one of the first ones. I'm sorry, I'm scrolling down to try and find it.
Mr. Mannion, do you want to make that change? I mean, you, you offended by it, Mr.?
It's in approval of minutes in 2015, okay.
We'll find it, thank you.
Yeah, proposed guidelines for supervisors, public meetings and shared person for 2021. It says, oh, that one says Ms. Herring motioned and approved, and I also seconded. So I'm not sure who seconded it, or who moved.
We'll check that out. Thank you. We'll make that correction.
And the, the one right underneath, the designate boards' areas of responsibility, it referred to Supervisor Mannion as Mr. Mannion.
Nice catch.
Anything else, Jen?
Just scrolling through real quick to see if there was anything else. I thought there was, might have been another one. Nope, that's it.
Okay, is there a motion to approve of those corrections?
I'll make a motion to approve with those corrections.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
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 Excellent. Thank you very much. Our next item is a BCPC Hazardous Waste Program. Bucks County Planning Commission, I assume that is what stands for?
Yes.
Hazardous Waste Program 2021 Annual Commitment Renewal?
Because of the COVID, they were originally supposed to go from 16 to 20, and we had to kind of, they tried to hold some of them, but they want to continue that for '21, and then set a new schedule for '22 to '26. Our share for '21 would be $2,005.21 and 13 cents. So I'd recommend that we continue. This is very popular with our residents.
Now, is there a motion to approve the 2021 has, Household Hazardous Waste Collection Program for, well, for 2021? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That's approved. Resignation of the Public Water Sewer Advisory Board Member, Mr. Monkout. Is there a motion to accept his resignation?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Dan. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Monkout was a very loyal and long-term servant of that board, so he will be missed. All right, the next item on the agenda is the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection Green Greenery Grant Rejection. That doesn't happen very often. So we applied for a grant for Salmon and Park?
We'll look to, yeah, we'll look to apply for it again.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda are reports from the Solicitor.
My report will follow later in the agenda, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Chief?
Nothing to report.
Township Engineer?
Nothing to report.
Manager?
I have nothing at this time.
Director of Operations?
I have a few items. The first is the Kids Castle Project 2021 Projects Areas A and B. Mr. Salvati, Chair of the Kids Castle, Friends of Kids Castle, made a number of presentations about his plans to, for the Kids Castle Committee to expand and continue to expand the playground and make modifications. We worked with the Kids Ca, Friends of Kids Castle Committee, and obviously, they have submitted a CapEx form for that project. We have proposals that we received from Gilmore Associates and Panoni to do the engineering. The engineering fees are included in the, were included in that CapEx amount that Mr. Salvati presented to the board that went into the budget. Before you are the proposals and my recommendation to award, basically, the project for the engineering, which includes the as-built survey, site engineering, final design and construction documentation, as well as permitting. That's parts A, B, and C, in the total amount of $7,836 to Gilmore Associates. Also, I'm asking the board to give us the option to approve the ad-alternate item for a final as-built survey in the amount of $1,760. So the total...
You do that first one altogether?
Yeah.
So there's, there's two things we're asking for, so I'm making a recommendation that this will be awarded to Gilmore.
Okay, so there's two, two applications here. The first is for engineering proposal 2021 for Areas A and B and Gilmore Associates in the amount of $9,596, and the base bid amount is $7,836, $7836, and ad-alternate of $1,1760. Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 And then the second is an award to Gilmore and Associates for their...
Second is for Panoni.
Yeah, I'm sorry, second.
Next item is for...
All right, beg your pardon.
Kids Castle Structural Condition Assessment. We, again, solicited proposals from Panoni and from Gilmore. This would be for the, what, you know, what we call Kids Castle proper. The actual wood structure would be a condition assessment, structural inspection. Two proposals were received, and the, we're making a recommendation that this be awarded to Panoni in the amount of $3,000 for the structural assessment.
Is there a motion to approve this, the one, the award to Panoni? I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Anything else, Tom? Dave?
One more is our Annual Britain Inspection. As you know, we conduct yearly, annual Britain inspections of all of our structures, pedestrian structures, road structures, and we received a proposal from Panoni to do the 2021 MBIS inspections. That is for, I apologize, somewhere in the amount of about 10 structures this year, as well as to prepare the inspection reports and documentation. That total for that assessment is $21,500. So I'm asking for the board's approval.
All right, is there a motion to approve a lump sum of $21,500? All right, is there a motion to approve a lump sum of $21,500 for the road, bridges, structures for 2021?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Any questions? I heard some hesitation. All good? All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Aye.
Anything else, Mr. Tomco?
That's it, thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is anything from the supervisors. Jen, you want to start? Jen Haring?
Oh, I mean, the, the only things that I have to say are, again, the Pension Advisory Council's done amazing work with their investment policy statement and Parks and Rec Open Space Comprehensive Plan. That was a project that we've been, we've been on for, for years and is a really well-done document. I'm really excited to, to be able to vote on it next week or next month, and, and I think that's it.
Thank you. Hey, Dan? Anything from you? Dan Wood?
No, nothing, nothing to report at this time.
Ryan Mannion?
Nothing to report at this time.
Nancy?
Sure, again, thank you to PAC. Great job, and same with the Park and Rec Comp Plan. Finally, just a quick note of, of good news. Bike and Height met at 8:00 AM this morning, and they've decided they're going to move forward with a mapping GPS program, so all of you bikers and hikers will be very happy. It's a great example of us working with Chalfont in New Britain, and it sounds like, you know, an opportunity to cross-pollinate committees, you know, with Park and Rec and be able to, they'll be able to showcase the different parks through the different paths, so they're in that process of doing that, but I think it'll be a really good opportunity for the, for the township.
Thanks, Nace. All right, let's move on. I'm not going to, I don't have anything that I need to report tonight. So next is the Brooks Track Cherry Lane Development Agreement.
If I may, the Board approved the subdivision known as the Brooks Track back in June of 2019. Had created four new lots, the development agreement was prepared, reviewed by all the consultants, and I would recommend the Board approve the Brooks Track Development Agreement, authorize the Chair to execute it.
Any questions? From any of the Board? Any questions from anybody out there? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the Brooks Track Development Agreement as articulated by Mr. Garten and as found in your packet? Don't let everybody talk at once.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Dan.
I'll second, thank you.
Are you sure there don't have any questions on this? Okay. Motion of a second, all in favor? Aye. Aye?
Aye.
Five and oh, good. And then the next is?
Next item, as you know from recent history, the folks at Sloan Audi Porsche on 611 were required to separate the Audi dealership from the Porsche dealership, and that land development plan was approved by the supervisors in February of this year. I prepared the development agreement. It's been reviewed by all the appropriate consultants and the like, and approved by the applicant. Would request the Board approve the development agreement for Sloan Audi Porsche and authorize Barbara to execute same upon receipt of the signatures by the developer.
He never makes a mistake, but it was approved February of last year. Not this year.
February 2020, 19?
February 2020, this is 21.
Oh, I meant, I said, didn't I say 2020?
No, you said February of last year.
Well, when I-
I just want to be stickler.
I'm appropriately chastised.
He's always correcting me, so it's got one. Anyway, is there a motion to approve the development agreement as, as we found it in our packet with the Warrington Audi subdivision of Porsche? And ready to go.
I'd like to make the motion to approve that.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I note David Sloan's in the, in the audience. Do you need to say anything, Mr. Sloan? He thanks the township for our support and helping him to move forward the project. Good luck with your project, sir. Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is the AARP Foundation Request for Fee Waiver.
Yes, the AARP works with seniors to help them prepare their tax returns, and they are hoping to utilize our facilities for, as a nonprofit organization from the end of January till April, and they are looking for a fee waiver. They have provided us with their charitable tax exemption information.
As a member of AARP, do I have to recuse myself?
You'd like to.
Is there a motion to approve the fee waiver for that organization? I'll make the question.
I, I do have, there is a correction I'd like to make, or someone they need to update themselves. The date requested to use the meeting room is until 2000, sorry, 20,221. They need, they have an extra two in there.
They have an extra two, and they're going to be using the activity room, and not, not this room, but the Activity Center. But we can cross out a two there.
I heard a motion. Yeah, we can, we can fix that. I heard a motion, is there, was there a second?
Jen seconded?
I think it might have to be, there might be another typo too, upward at the name of the organization, it says AARP, assume that should be a P.
Yes, it goes with their letter. I, I think they're just typos.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll make sure the package stays together when it's filed.
Okay, any, any other questions? Is there, was there a second? I'm not-
I have Jen as the second.
And who made, who made the motion?
Nancy.
Okay.
I made the motion.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and I'm not recusing myself. Okay. Next item is Emergency Management Plan Update.
That's correct. Our Emergency Management Coordinator is here if anyone has any questions for Sinclair.
Yeah, that's Resolution 2269?
That is correct.
Now, is it a biannual or an annual review? Because the caption says biannual, yet the therefore says annual. So, so it's biannual in the, in the caption, and so at the nail and the wherefore, approve, adopt, and place into immediate effect, blah, blah, blah. This plan shall be reviewed on a biannual basis or annual basis?
It should say biannual basis.
Okay, that's just a correction then to-
Thank you.
We can approve it with that correction? Is there a motion to approve it with that correction?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of the motion to, to approve Resolution 2269? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the clarification. All right, next item on the agenda is the Job Classification Compensation Study. Stephanie, you gave us a long memo, but you have one that you prefer. Is that the Governor HR Proposal?
Yes, the Gov. HR proposal I found was more comprehensive and had very good recommendations from colleagues, and they have a very good reputation nationally, and I would recommend that we engage them for $12,250 to complete our compen, our overall compensation job classification and benefit survey.
Okay, is there a motion to approve Governor HR, Gov. HR Proposal, $12,250 for the Job Classification Compensation Study?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second to, on, on that motion?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I like it, Dan, when I ask questions and you just shake your head. That's really-
I try.
I can see that, I can see that rather than here. That's, that's really very helpful, actually very helpful to me, so thank you. Next item is the PennDOT Roundabout Project Update. And I guess Sanford, Mr. Sanford weighed in on this, is not affecting the bike trail or if it's de minimis effect, I'm not quite sure what it ends up being.
That is correct.
It's, it's a, it's a, it's a concurrence?
Yes, he concurs that, and one, I just really want to make sure that the Board, we keep this in the forefront. They're doing the F4F section because there is trails near the proposed project. We did have our bike hike consultant look at it. He concurs that the proposed project of the roundabouts, which PennDOT is still moving forward on, will not negatively impact the trail system that is out there. We need to reply to PennDOT and let them know that we've reviewed it and that we're okay with that, but before I just did that, I wanted to make sure that the Board was aware of it and that our bike hike consultant has also looked at it and we're, does not have a problem with that impacting, proposed project impacting our trails. They'll, in fact, from the diagram, you can see they're going to be incorporating.
Okay, so we don't, we don't need any action.
We don't need any action, we just have to let PennDOT know, but I wanted to keep everyone in the loop on that.
Okay, thanks, Stephanie. And then next is the PennDOT Tree Planning.
Yes, the Board will recall this summer, on August 4th, we had that EF2 tornado come through our community, and our residents who abut the bypass along Country Brook Drive lost an immense amount of trees that were planted actually by Bucks Beautiful, as well as Kuanis, and the township in Borough at the time, people may remember a lot of evergreen trees, you still see buffers of evergreen trees throughout the bypass area. One of the things that we're hoping is that part of our Arbor Day project, we're going to be able to get donations of trees, and we will install trees along that area. One of the requirements is, is when working with PennDOT, we have to have an agreement with them, and so it's a right of entry in the landscape installation and maintenance in that segment of 611 bypass, and we would ask that the Board enter the agreement with PennDOT so that we could move forward in the spring for an Arbor Day planting project along there.
Chief, you have a question?
On another topic.
On another topic, okay, thanks. Does any have any questions with this agreement? Well, I, you know, I don't know, I find it extraordinary that for us to plant trees, we have to enter into all this paper, 14 pages of paper and understanding and wheres and whatfores and, anyway. And I wanted to also say that before, former Representative Almond did try to get us trees and help from PennDOT in order to replant that buffer, so to her credit, she did make that effort, but a lack and a lass, well, here we are with Arbor Day instead, so is there a motion to approve us entering into this agreement with PennDOT to plant volunteer trees or donated trees on the, on this bypass where the trees were destroyed by the tornado?
Make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. That's five and oh. And then I'm getting to the end here. Next is the-
Barb, can I just?
What, did I mess up? Oh, your question?
Yeah, I apologize for not bringing this up early. It slipped my mind. With the, with the warmer weather coming, we've been getting phone calls regarding solicitors, and I know that we suspended all solicitors in the township going through the entire pandemic. I wonder if I could get the consensus of the Board whether or not we should open that up and allow door-to-door soliciting.
I'm not, I would not want to have somebody come to my door, yet.
I agree.
So, no.
It needs to be in place for another few months at least.
Can we extend it out 90 days without work?
No, not, no, there's no consensus to allow solicitation in our township.
We'll keep it suspended until further notice.
Great, yeah, okay, thanks. Everyone's in agreement with that. Do you need a, we don't need a vote, we got consensus. Thank you, Chief. All right, next is the Treasurer's Report for January 19th, 2021. Everyone had a chance to review it. Is there a motion to approve it?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Thank you, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And then finally, the Bills List from January 19th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the Bills List?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, Nancy seconded before Jen jumped in. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, finally, there's not a lot of announcements, so I'm going to read them again. "We're open to business, but please wear your mask and social distancing is required. Next meeting of this Board is February 16th at 7:00 PM. If you want to attend remotely, you know, contact us and we'll send you a link. We're closed for President's Day on Monday, February 15th. And Christmas Tree drop-off, it's going to end January 31st, and if you want to drop off your Christmas tree and it's still dropping needles in your, in your living room, then do so at the New Britain Road entrance to Central Park, again, before January 31st." Hearing no other business, we're adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
Good night, all.